Welcome back to Ruth Talk. I am here today with another special person. I have seen many short films, even Tamil people's activities in Kamblean city council. Now he is a councillor of the Kamblean city council. Yes, Sujan Saldar. Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Good.
You are in Sydney now. If you are there, we will welcome you.
Thank you.
I will ask directly. I saw news. You, councillor, have been talking about the main thing in the upcoming elections. You are introducing Tamil people's Marabu War. What did you say when you introduced Tamil people's Marabu War?
The Tamil people's Marabu War is a celebration of our Tamil culture, our culture, our heritage. It is a celebration. We have brought people to this place to celebrate. At the beginning of the year, we will make a celebration. Everyone has taken advantage of the election. Some people have taken advantage of the election. But I think it is a celebration. But if you think about it, it is a celebration of our culture, our heritage. It is a way to get the other states to take advantage of it. It is a way to get the other states to take advantage of our culture.
I think you said something. Now I am right, you are a councillor. Is Kamblean councillor's vote for the other voter in the Tamil people's Marabu War applicable? Or is it only for the three?
No. This is my vote. There are five voters in Kamblean council. Five voters and five councillors live there. Five councillors have voted for this motion. If we pass this motion, it will be a vote. All of this is a celebration. This is a very happy issue. After we pass this motion, it will be a celebration at the federal level. And to Chaltena, it is a proposal.
Okay, that is a very good news. I think it is a very happy news. Now, you said that it is a celebration of the war. Now it is a celebration of the future war. That is what you defined in January 2000. You don't define it in April. You are taking it as a temporary one. What is the reason?
At the beginning, I was taking advantage of other countries. I was preparing for the election. We have taken advantage of Canada in January. The UK city of London in January. I think this is a celebration of our councillors. We have taken advantage of it in January. That is why we have a river. We will take advantage of it. But we do not want to take advantage of other cultures. We do not want to lose evidence. That is why I was preparing for it. I am not considering it generally.
Okay, you are saying that people of Tamil people's Marabu War are giving up momentum. I have a question. Actually, two questions. Are there any celebrations in other cultures? Is Kamblean council the first one?
The heritage is the first one. But we do not have a council at the level of Tamil people's Marabu War. But Chinese people are very important. As well as the mother culture, Islam is a holiday. Christmas is Christmas. It is important. Marabu heritage is the first one.
Okay. As you said, the people of the Pulam Bay are Tamil people. They are Tamil people from Thailand or Thailand. The election is carried out in every country. It is only Sydney, Melbourne, Australia, or other countries. If we are carrying it out officially, does it have any difference with the government level?
I think it is a victory. As we said, our culture is very important. It is also a culture. But even if it is a cultural heritage, we do not want to take advantage of it in other states.
We are saying that we are choosing a country.
We are saying that we do not want to take advantage of it. For example, people of Tamil people's Marabu War, they are in a way that they have built a palace. Because of our culture, we want to take advantage of it. I think it is very important. But we are trying to make a big identity. But we are not trying to do it. We do not know whether other countries have done it or not. But we should celebrate it. Another reason is that we are celebrating it. We are looking at it. As soon as I came, I was doing it. But I tried to do it for four or five years. Four or five years. Eight years. Since then, we have been standing in the election election. We have been voting for our policy. We have been voting for other states. We have been voting for other states. This is a celebration of Tamil heritage week. We are trying to make a celebration. But I do not know what happened in the upcoming elections. But as soon as I came, it was an October election. I was trying to make a celebration in January. But we have not seen a council level. We have a little one. That is why it is a council level. Now, in Chaltena, at the federal level, Australia is a good one. It is a victory. Other places are like Canada, Australia, London. So we are trying to get the other states and our culture. It is a positive.
Okay. Now, a political side question. In this topic, politics. Do you accept other states or the authorities who are in this situation? Just because of the understanding of Tamil people's Marabu War? Or because of the support of people of Tamil people's Marabu War? What do you think?
It is a question. Because we are the people of our culture, our heritage, and our country. They are trying to help each other. In that way, if you go to the RCL, they have a party. They are in the state. When they come to our state, they are trying to help. Our RCL has the power of negotiation. So it is used by us. We are trying to make it better. Whether it is a state or a country, I am a country. But I am not afraid of everyone. Even if I am in a country, I am not afraid of anyone. Everyone has their own problem. In that way, we are trying to help our supporters. Before that, we are trying to make it better. We are trying to use the power of negotiation. We are trying to use it. Because we do not want to use it badly. But if it is a victory, we will try to make it better. We will try to make it better.
A power.
We will try to use it.
Okay. Now, you said that we established the idea of the Tamil people's Marabu War. It is an official idea. You were the councillor. The same way, a personal question. When did you think, "I will be in politics"?
No.
Ah, okay.
I did not think of it. I came to RCL because my friend, Ronald, is in 2014. He is in eighth or ninth month. He is asking me to arrange a table. At that time, I said that there is a seat for prospect. And there is a new seat for prospect. You can run in that seat. You can run in that seat. It is a good issue. It is important for Tamil people to buy it. It is a marginal seat. I have seen it twice. If you see it, identify it, and talk about it. Another opportunity. I will make it easy. The reason is that we were in the human rights activism in 2008. That is the reason. As you said, refugees are a major issue. That is a good point. They are trying to help. As well as human rights, they are helping. If you see them, you are a green catcher.
He is the right man.
In the time of the election, I took it seriously. I said it as an opportunity. If you take it, it is another reason. In 2009, in 2013, we had a way to live. We had a way to live in our political struggle. We had to change it. Because of that, we are not celebrating it now. We decided to change it. I bought it. We wanted to go to RCL. There is no money. Because of that, people of the rich.
I know that.
That is the reason. The reason is that we are in our country. We have seen a good way to go to RCL. People of RCL are scared. My mother also had a moment. That is why I have seen it. I have seen it. That is why I have seen it. That is why I have seen it. I was running for the election in 2013.
Okay. So, he is the right man. Do you realize it now? Yes, he is the right man.
Actually, I told my lady when I won the election. But I told her that I did not want to stand in front of her. As well as I am a RCL supporter. I told her that she did all the work. She did all the work. I did not give up until she did it. I did not give up. I wanted to think about it. I am doing it now. I am there because of that. It is a normal thing in our state. We need to change it. We need to go to RCL. We need to go to RCL. In that way, I am a good person. I am a good person. I am a good person. They are in any country. They are in any country.
Okay. Now, you have mentioned something. Why are you using Tamil words? Do you purposely do that? Or did you do it naturally?
No. I came to this place to talk Tamil. I came to this place to talk Tamil.
Did you come to Australia in the eighteenth century?
Eighteenth century. Then, I made a 70% accuracy requirement. In that way, I was trying to make a difference in Tamil people's Marabu War. It was a failure. It was a failure. But it is a good thing. I found it.
What color is it? Is it blue?
It is blue. When we are trying to make a difference in Tamil people's Marabu War. It is important that Indian people of our country have heard of us. They are glad that we are the only ones.
A Japanese people.
That is a good thing. But I think that we are not aware of our culture. We are trying to learn from it. In that way, our thinking process is improved. We can think about it. It is a healthy way. The other thing is that we will make a celebration of our children. If I talk to Tamil people, it is a good thing. If it is a good thing, we will make a celebration of it. That is why I am making a celebration of Tamil people.
Okay. Now, you are proposing a political step. I do not know. It is not political. A government term. You are proposing it. Finally, accepted. Now, we are making a celebration of Tamil people's Marabu War. Do you make a celebration of people's Marabu War?
I think it is different. I think it is a good thing. We go to RCL. In that way, we go to council. Some people of our level see the council. If they go inside, it is a good thing.
There are some.
I am a candidate for the federal senate in 2025.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you. In this election, there are less difficulties. It is a magic. My view is 2028. I am doing it for the 2028 election. If I am elected as a senate candidate in 2028, I will do the next thing.
Then, I will give you a gift.
I will.
Your councillor is in this moment. Or do you try to get your state to try it? At Sydney or New South Wales, do you think we should give a base for Tamil people's Marabu War?
No. I am...
The question is, do you see it as a personal progressive achievement? Or is it an influential moment? We have enough people. We have enough people voting. It is a push. And do you think so?
It is a question. Because of my concern, I went to the green catcher. I understand their concerns, their health. If there is no problem, I was a part of the RCL. Bob Brown was there. Lee Riannan was there. Now, David Superich, the senator, is helping us. In that way, I have experienced a state election. I have experienced a state election without a councillor. The election is a victory. It is a victory in Kamblean council. I am a green catcher. I am a group. I am a branch. This branch, they are looking at it differently. Because of that, this is Labor Strong Hope. It is a victory. Until now, I did not stand in front of a green candidate.
You are the first green councillor.
Councillor. It is a break in. In that way, we are very proud of them. We are trying to make it better. They are trying to make it better. After that, I am trying to make a difference in other word pollers. I am trying to make a difference in workshops, training, presentations. After that, Kamblean council, a council, and we are very different. They are very familiar with us. I think it is a positive issue. We are a team. We are working together. We are working hard. We recognize each other. We identify each other. We progress in the next step. So, I am a question. Our friends in the state are trying to push the party. We are trying to push it. They are a good example. I think it is a win-win. We are trying to make a difference in the future. If I am elected as a green word poller, we will build a foundation. So, we need to strengthen the green catcher's strength. In that way, I think it is a victory.
Okay. Coming back to the Tamil people's Marabu War. You are saying that, how do you feel? Do you have five votes?
Four.
Four votes. Another councillor, we do not want to celebrate this.
If they do, we will take it. I am positive about it. I am trying to make a difference in our culture. I think it is a good thing. Because 100,000 Tamil people are buying a house. It is a good thing for the people of the state to have a councillor. It is a good one. Prospect. As well as we are in the next seat. Because if you go to Chaltena, it is a good place for the people of Tamil people. It is a good place to vote. It is a good place. In that way, I think we should make a difference in our state. I think it is a good thing.
It is a good thing. You said it here. I said it here. This is a civil park. I am South America. I think it will be fine. A political question. If I am going to interview a liberal or laborer tomorrow. I will change the question. There is a question. About liberals, you say it is a good issue. About laborers, you say it is a good issue. Do you know what you know about liberals?
About liberals, they are a transactional business. I am trying to see. They are doing what they want.
They can do it.
They can do it. That is the reason. As well as labor, they are middle class.
They are known.
They are known. It is a good place. If you see it, it is a good history. That is why I am trying. If I know a good issue, I will talk about it.
No. The question is, what do you know about other states? That is the basic idea. As you said, the first councillor of the green catcher is a Tamil person. Now, you are interested. I am not going to RCL. They are the next generation. They are looking at you. What do you say?
It is a victory to join a member of a country.
What is a country? A green member.
No. No. I am telling everyone. It is a bystand. Our state has ABC channel. ABC. Oslain Broadcasting. ABC.
Corporation.
Corporation. It is a application for voting. So, you have your interests. Your policy interests. You have looked at it. Do you have a result for which you are a supporter?
Ah, okay. I would try that.
If you search in Google, you will find ABC Voting Combase. If you see it, it is a good place. Everyone is a supporter of the green catcher. It is important that Calvi, public transport, public education, hospitals. We are all angry at them. We are watching them. Immigration policy. But I am a green catcher. We are open. Everyone will try. Do you think you are a supporter of the country? You should join the country. Why is it a good thing? A country or a word poller, a state or a word poller. It is a good place for you.
Ah, okay.
There is a local group. The member of the local group is the one who is going to finish the word poll. They are trying to make you laugh. In that way, you will have a good point. They will be your partner.
Okay.
So, if you are going to be a political candidate, you will have a learning. You will have a learning. You will have a learning. For example, if a councillor is in the house, there is a food problem. There is a illegal dumping. It is a good place for a good person. You make a phone call. It is a good way to solve a problem.
It is not your problem. It is your problem. Because you have the connection.
Yes. It is a personal connection. So, it is a good place to make a difference. We have seen the state. We are trying to make a difference. We are trying to make a difference.
I am thinking about it. You are looking at Australia. Maybe you are 30%. It is a good place. What is it?
Yes. It is a good place. But we are... We are experiencing a good life in RCL. We are experiencing a good life. In that way, I am trying to change it. But if you change it, it is a good place. If you are trying to make a difference, a country will emerge. A country will emerge. A local group will emerge. That is what I am seeing. In the next step, you will be ready.
No. I have another question. About Ruth Talk, I do not want to talk about RCL. Today, I am thinking about the Tamil people's Marabu War. Now, I am rethinking to talk on politics.
It is a good issue. I mean, there is RCL everywhere. We have not gone to RCL. But some people say that RCL is a bad place. But no matter what, it is a good place. If you take a ride, you will go to a hotel. You will go to a hotel. It is a good place. There is a train. It is a good place. We wait a lot in hospitals. We wait for two months. Now, there is a gap payment. We pay extra for Medicare. We go to GPS. There is RCL everywhere. But if you change it, we will change it. If not, it is not. So, it is a good place. I am not talking about RCL. It is a good place. When we are friends, it is a good place.
Now, you have other sides. In the media, in movies. All of this is in the hands of the councillor. Do you want to do it?
No. At the beginning, I take every opportunity as a challenge or as a chance. Because I feel... I am sorry, I am speaking English. I am interpreting. I am interpreting. Because I think we will go to the temple. We will do this. But it is not wrong to go to the temple. We have made mistakes. It is a good thing. We will use it. That is why I am doing it. So, your questions, media. I saw some friends and heard about it. That is what I am doing. After that, I am preparing for it. Some courses, training, that is what I am doing. I am trying to make a movie. I am trying to make a movie. My friends told me that I am doing this character. That is what I am doing. Film and media site. It is a good way to start.
Okay. Now, the government of the federal government is coming. Who will be the winner?
I know. I heard about it. A lady from Ambigant, a labor party. They elected a councillor. I met him at a school event. Now, he is...